I would like to call the Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting of May 18th, 2022 to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Where do we have this?
(inaudible)
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd also like to state that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. So, we first are going to ratify tonight's agenda. I don't believe we discussed any changes that we needed to make.
No, I think the one that's sitting in front of you, not the one I have in front of me, has Amanda Howe's presentation.
Yes, so that if you, the previously posted agenda had the presentation from the robotics team, but we are pushing that to junior. Any other changes or requests? All right, I'll take a motion to approve, or ratify, rather.
I'll make a motion to ratify the agenda for May 18th, 2022, as presented.
Motion by Kathy.
I'll second that.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? Okay, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so somewhere in here. We, no, I just realized, I'm going to send it to the printer. Oh, okay. All right, so, I realize we just ratified this agenda, but we're going to take one thing out of order. Do we have any public comment? There's none. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and have our students go, and then we'll come back and pick up the rework. So, we'll start with our soon-to-be alum, Skylar Riffle.
Hello, good evening. Tonight's my last ever school committee meeting after the last four years, which is so weird, but I'll get into my report. And so, one thing really liked that we were able to start with the Paul Funk Healthcare Center. It's really just a lot of gratitude in here, especially because a lot of my friends are going into nursing, and some of the girls in the younger grades as well. And so, there's just so many people that are interested in a lot of the classes that they're going to offer next year between genetics and global infectious disease. And a lot of people in my grade and the grades above that really would have loved to have a space like this. And so, it's going to be really cool for some of the grades to follow. On Thursday, April 28th, the Quashnet School had their STEAM night, which was a lot of fun because some of us who are in the Math Honor Society volunteered at it. We were helping them with probability. And a lot of them had these contraptions where they had an egg and they had to put something around it so that it wouldn't be destroyed, but they found like six different ways you could destroy them. They had like a basketball station, they had to kick it with a soccer ball, they had to hit it with a wiffle ball bat, and with a hockey stick. So, they were really doing everything they could to try to break these, and that was a lot of fun. Ellie Mitchell, one of our seniors, is working on the Thirst Project, which is a continued legacy senior project that serves to raise enough money for the key club to build wells in a country in Africa. And so, she's been doing a really great job. She hosted a bowling night in the beginning of April, and then a mini golf event last week. And so, she put a lot into work into having those two different things. And I really like when people do fundraisers like that because they're very interactive and they get to have people involved in the process rather than just donating, which is also very nice. But sometimes it's nice to be involved in it as well and engage adults and children alike. In these past two weeks, Mashpee High School students have been working very hard on their AP exams, which today pretty much come to a close, and with some of our younger students taking MCAS, just a lot of hard work and testing as we get ready for the nicer and warmer weather when things wind down a bit. The National English Honor Society hosted their induction ceremony on the 5th of May, and they welcomed some new sophomores and juniors. And so, congratulations to them. We had our scholarship night for seniors last week here. We have such a generous community in Mashpee. We had 48 seniors receive scholarships for all different requirements, some that were about sports, some about nursing, some about character. And we were just really grateful for that, especially for our connection with Southport, which hosted about 15 of us last Friday night for a dinner and a concert with some of our music students. And so, Scholarship Night was a very big night for a lot of us, and we are very grateful for that. On Monday, baseball beat sandwich for Senior Night, honoring our two seniors, Robert Sanborn and Eric Menke. It was a very close game, they won 5-4, it was a great, great game. And then out there tonight for Girls Across is Ally Leeds, Julia Tenore, the goalie, Kalia Eaton, Sam Mori, Alice Porsha, Ava Cristo, Megan Bennett, Ava Gonzoals, and Madeline Cook. And so, they have about nine seniors out there. So, they'll be good next year, but losing nine is tough, and so, good luck to them. Looking forward, we have our softball Senior Night on Friday, our Seniors Last Day on Friday, our Junior-Senior Prom on Saturday. We've been working on what's called a Life Impact Diploma, and we start those presentations next week, which is where seniors choose a student or a teacher from any year before high school. And they really, they write a short letter about the impact that that teacher has had on them, and then we're going to go down in our cap and gowns next week and present it to them. It'll be a really nice tradition to keep going and just to show that gratitude between our schools since we have the opportunity, and a lot of our students end up going through Quashnet, through the middle high school. We have the Immigration Project at Mashpee Public Library on May 26th, that a lot of our students, we saw the presentation at our last meeting, and so, a lot of our students are working really hard on that. And so, that's next week, I think next Thursday. And then Senior Week, Class Day, Graduation, just so much for seniors, which is very exciting to look forward to. And so, in close, I'm just really grateful for the privilege of serving as our school committee's student liaison for the past four years. And I've learned so much, and I'll take this experience with me into U Penn at the fall. And so, thank you so much.
Next, we have Delia.
It's nice to see you guys again. The weather's finally been really, it's really getting warmer, which I'm so excited about. And now, as we're really getting close to the end of the year, it also means that we're getting really close to Skylar graduating.
And a bunch of other people.
And a bunch, a bunch of students, seniors, yeah. Skylar, I would just like to thank you for taking me under your wing and teaching me how to be a good student rep and the student rep that I am today. You've been so kind and helpful and just an awesome role model for me to look up to. You've made a huge and everlasting, everlasting impact on not only me, but a lot of others because you're known as being just a very awesome role model in the school. Every time my friends, like every time your name is brought up, they're like, "Yes, Skylar's so awesome." And I just want you to know that I really appreciate you taking me under your wing, and you will be missed. Okay, so, this month, a few things have happened. For starters, National Junior Honor Society will be having their induction ceremony tomorrow at 6:30. Both 8th, 9th, and 7th graders will be inducted, so that's very exciting. Rehearsal for that took place this afternoon from 2:00 to 2:30 in homeroom. So, the 9th graders that are writing speeches, and the 7th graders and 8th graders that are being inducted. And it was really nice because so many people were excited because it's like, it's a very nice opportunity. And 8th graders will start to be able to think about like running for officer positions next year, and that's like very important, like Vice President, President, Secretary, Treasurer. We're starting to think about that because when we were 7th graders and coming in, we didn't have that opportunity to apply for those positions. But now that we're going into 9th grade, we'll be able to. So, that's what we're starting to consider. Student Body Government also met this month to discuss the middle school dance that we planned for June 21st. This will be from 5:30 to 7:00 at Pompanessa Inn, and it's like $5 per ticket, but everyone's really excited because it's the first dance without a mask since before COVID. So, everyone's really excited. And we've dedicated some members to coming up with ideas for posters and tickets for the dance. So, like they're designing like different ideas, and I think it's really creative that they're doing this. The style of the attire for the dance will be semi-formal, so like not tuxedos. I mean, if you want. It's, it's all about your perception on semi-formal, but additionally, the tennis girls have their Senior Night next Wednesday. And as for the last, the last game will be on the 26th for Varsity, although the JV team won't be having their last game until June. JV and Varsity are very close knit, so the JV will be at the Varsity game, and the Varsity will probably be at the JV game. And the girls' varsity team, like the games are ending so early that it just feels like the spring season went by so quickly because I feel like I was just here talking about spring season's sports beginning, and now I'm talking about them ending. So, it's, it's crazy. Off the sports note, I was going to talk about the robotics team. I know they're going to present next time, but I just wanted to add Jamie, she's on the tennis girls team, which is why I wanted to mention this. Her and her partner Katrina, they came in 18th out of 82 teams in their division, and that's just awesome. They did great. They also won the Inspire Award for their competition, and I'm just really proud of Jamie. She had so much fun when she went to Texas. Today, everyone finished their final day of Math MCAS. Woo-hoo! It was like way off of our shoulders. Everyone was so happy to, you know, finish. Everyone kind of like really put a lot of effort, effort towards this. I mean, except for the students that need to do makeup tests and the students, the 8th graders who still have Science MCAS, but for the 7th graders, they're good for this year. It's crazy to think about the, the year basically being over. Like, we only have a month left, and for the seniors, they have like a few days left, which is insane. And I'm so glad that I've been given this opportunity. Thank you all for your time, and I hope you all have a lovely rest of your week.
So glad there are more people to hear your reports tonight because they're the highlight of my meetings. Thank you. So, any questions for either Skylar or Delia? No? Okay. I know you're anxious to get to Senior Night over there, but we've got you coming up in just a few minutes, so can you sit tight for a second? Okay. So, next on the agenda is Roxanne, Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. And I, and I think you left something for us here, so thank you for that.
Is this on? Yeah. Okay. I'll just go through some of the items here in the, in the handout. The STEM workshop that we've talked so much about, which is a partnership between Webner and the Education Department. Registration's out. I think we have three teachers from Mashpee and about two or three from Falmouth already signed up. I think there's a maximum of 20 individuals that can register. We have 12-plus, I think, right now. The tribal early childhood curriculum will be the focus of a discussion on Thursday afternoon. We're looking to partner with Collaborative Education Services to help us develop a age 6-week through age 5 early childhood curriculum that will be presented to our new early childhood center once that's completed. We hope to be able to provide the content with them helping us with the framework, ensuring that we're covering all the areas that probably early education and care covers. The Falmouth School District has invited the tribe to contribute and provide technical assistance to their food justice program, which begins in September. It's a class, and the premise of that class is sustainable and just land use. And I know for us, it's land and water, so that'll be an important piece. And we'll have community people whose lives are heavily involved in just this type of work. Summer camp registration will be out in the next few days. We're going to do an eBlast, and we'll have it on our website, so that parents have to mail their applications to the government center. We have such demand, and we have to cap it to 30 students, that we, we decided that the postmark would have to be prior to the camp, and it's kind of first come, first served. So, we'll be looking closely at, at the date of mailing and when we receive those applications. Let's see here.
Roxanne, is the summer camp the same as the Preserve Our Homelands Camp, or are they two different things?
They're two different things, and I, again, you asked me the last time, I neglected to put that on here. Preserving Our Homelands will be for four weeks, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, July through August. And Natural Resources is sponsoring this. I don't have the exact dates yet, but...
I just wanted to clarify, so they're different.
Yeah, they're different. And Preserving Our Homelands is for 10 through, I think, 13-year-olds. The, the Tribal Court Elders Panel worked cooperatively with Mashpee School District, and we, we conducted a session with some youth about a month ago, and then we had a follow-up session a couple of weeks ago. In the short term, it seems like we were successful in helping to resolve issues between some youth here in the district. Let's see. And just most recently, our education program, the Title VI Formula Education Grant, partnered with Waukahua Bay National Estuary and Reserve, and they presented educational information on the estuary and the tribe's connection to the estuary. They worked with 6th graders from Mashpee, Wareham, and Falmouth. I did want to mention, because I know this is also televised, that Candy Hendricks, who is the sister of Kitty Hendricks, made a very generous donation to our education scholarship fund. And we will like, we'd like to formally thank her here, but we will also thank her on our website and in the June Mitch Art. So, thank you, Candy. We did submit our State Education Partnership Grant Annual Performance Report. And then lastly, the State Education Partnership Agreement will be the focus of a Zoom call between Patty, Lori Durr, and myself on May 19th. This is in regard to possibly contracting with ISLA or Indian Students Sleeping Ahead Project to work with all students in select classrooms or in select subject areas to assess their, their learning styles, and then to help develop lessons with the classroom teacher to present to students. We have found that a great majority of students are visual, and oftentimes, lessons are not developed necessarily for those that are visual. So, we're hoping to help with the engagement there, and thus, achievement. The last thing I wanted to say, between this initiative with ISLA and a grant that was submitted, we submitted a Native Youth Community Project Grant, and when it was submitted, there was no partnership agreement with it. So, I got an email that said, "Get it in by the 18th." So, we were looking to partner with Falmouth and Mashpee, and in the process, of course, we had not informed the two districts or superintendents that we were submitting this grant. Lessons learned is that we, and I'll speak for the Education Department, we as a tribal education department, find ourselves working in isolation a lot, and then we expect the districts to partner. That doesn't work. And we can do some things, you know, our cultural things that we're having outside of the school possibly, but when it comes to partnering with the school and getting in here and meeting with students and interfacing with staff, we really have to do a better job. That just, that goes to building our capacity and just getting out of our own comfort zone because we too, you know, didn't necessarily have good public school experiences and, but we're adults. And so, I just want to say, I've learned so much, and I am taking that to my staff so that when I leave, my staff at least has a good basis to continue and doesn't kind of fall back. Because there's so many principles and standards and professional qualities that we, as a tribal education department, really have to solidify, and we have to grow. And so, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't go anywhere.
Really.
No, I mean, you're not allowed to go anywhere. Yeah, we're super, super lucky.
I did, I too did retire once. But I just want to thank you, and really, we are going to address, you know, growth. It's growth, it's, it's opportunity, and it's really partnering with a great group of people, so thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about that at the next partnership meeting too, and kind of expand on that discussion?
Yes.
Because I think that's something we definitely, I, I hear you, and I kind of feel the same, like I think that connection.
That's an excellent place to...
And that's probably a good starting point to have that discussion begin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to add, I think, so on, at your next partnership meeting, you're going to be framing the agenda for our joint meeting with the tribe on June 8th, the Tribal Council. And I think, you know, when we started this whole official, formal partnership back in 2017, we were really focused on relationships. Like, we knew that was the first thing. And it turned out that, once we got everybody together, there was all the stuff that was, everybody wanted to do, and so, we just started getting busy doing them. But I think I miss the relationships, and then we had COVID, so, you know, that kind of got in the way. But I feel like what you're talking about sort of feeds into that need to keep those relationships growing, to keep doing stuff together. Whether it's activities to the, for the partnership or something else, but just like finding more opportunities to connect, you know, the schools and the tribe.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. There we have it. We spent too much time. All right, so, thank you. Before we get to the special recognitions, we just need to approve the minutes from May 4th. Are there any edits or motions related to these? Page one of your packet.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Don, for a second.
I'll make a second.
Say, thank you, Matt. Second by Matt. Any discussion? Okay, Brian, how do you vote?
Obstein.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Obstein.
I vote yes as well, so those are approved. So, we do need to get back to rework, but I think if we do the recognitions first, that would be great. So, we first want to, we're going to do Gus first?
Yes, we are.
Gustickly. What are we going to do about Gustickly? So, those of us who have kids that have come through the school are very familiar with you and are...
I don't know my name. Mr. Gus. I don't know my last name.
Thank you. My, I have to say, you know, you've been with us for a long time through my children coming through Kims and Quashnet, and my favorite was the bread pudding, like...
Bake off.
Bake off, which didn't happen...
I lost.
Which you lost tragically, but anyway, so I just want to say, I thought that was super cool. So, what we have is a certificate from the House, the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Being hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Gus, do I say Gustav or Gus?
Gustav.
Gustav.
I'm known as Gus. Gustav is my name.
Gustav, they put your full name in here. Stickly, in recognition...
The fourth.
The fourth?
Yeah.
Well, I'll pencil that in. In recognition of your 10 years of dedicated service to the Mashpee Public Schools and our entire community, enjoy your retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 18th day of May, 2022, and signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House. And David Vera has his signature on here too, of course.
No, ma'am.
We don't want to do it in front of the toilet. Let's do it in front of the ambulance. Yeah.
There we go.
There you go. Thanks, Gus, congratulations. Thanks for all your hard work on behalf of our kids. Do you want it there? Should we get someone else to take this?
Well, I just wanted to say a little bit.
Yeah.
And I know, should we cut it up? Just wait for this. Does it help to be everything? I don't know.
Does that work? So, I know, so much better.
If we could drag this out for Gus, that would be great.
It would. I know he enjoys the spotlight. I just want to say, so I've known Gus, I think, the whole time that you've been here, and I actually think I knew him as a parent to his children because I think I taught both of them. But he has been a constant sort of in my life. I think we got to know each other a little bit more closely during COVID when we had to distribute meals. That was a fun time, Gus.
Black Jane Milk.
But I will say, Gus always comes through. I often would say, "Gus, I need some things, some goodies for this meeting," without a lot of notice, or "Can we have the really good ice cream for the staff with about a week ahead of notice?" Like, I never think of it ahead of time, but he always would come through, even if he went to Stop &amp; Shop himself and got it for us. He always would make me the food that I most prefer at staff lunches, which is generally fish with shrimp, Caesar salad. He knows I don't like any kind of like mixtured up stuff, and so, I will miss, I probably won't get to have those options at once he's gone. I know, I don't know what he said at home or in the car about me, but he never said anything bad to my face. But I know that the families and the kids have really appreciated the influence and impact of Gus. I know we have our other principals here as well who've worked very closely. It's not an easy job to be in charge of kitchens that are, you know, in three different buildings, and it's just not an easy job. And I really appreciate all that he did, and I know that, I forgot to mention him earlier with Paul Funk. He was very close to Paul. They spent a lot of time, I guess, solving the world's problems, but, but he, together, they were a really strong team, and I know that the loss of Paul was very strong for Gus, and Paul thought so highly of Gus, so he would have loved to be here tonight to send you off into your retirement world that we're all jealous of as well. I have a little thing to give you.
You're still going.
Just in appreciation for all that you are and...
Give you a little Mashpee to take with you, and those are...
I got the brownies too, Ashley.
Oh, yes, by the way, there was a little audit today, and Ashley and Gus spent all day long in a conference room with two people, and I had the brownies, and I said to Ashley, "Do you think it's like a bribe if I offer brownies to these two auditors?" But they were very grateful at the end of the day, they took them, so I'm sorry, I forgot to give you.
You want me to take the mic for you, Gus?
Yes.
And do you want to say anything?
Yeah, do you want to say?
Let's turn it off.
Yes.
Oh, actually, we just have a full on...
Into this.
No, you're good, you're good.
What did I say? Nothing? No, I thought... I got something.
Oh, no, no, no. No, you get to say.
I didn't want to go.
You get to. Also, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to stay standing because it's easier. So next, we have a bit of emotional moment for me because Ms. Skylah has been on this, our student rep, the whole time I've been on the committee. And I had the pleasure today, this year, to see her present at a conference of my peers. She was at the November Conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Members. She impressed everyone, not just with her poise and her presence, which is always on, spot on, but her ability to cultivate such gratitude and kindness, something that I think is so needed right now in this world. And I think, I just, I think that's why I love you so much is because I just, it's like having a little ray of sunshine in every room you go into. My favorite memory, despite that, which was definitely the top, was when we were taking the mask, removing masks, and we had to have this crazy vote in the middle of a school day before February break. And we were, we were doing this virtual meeting and we had all these people online. And we go to Brian and Brian goes, I don't know, what does Skylah think? And Skylah's like live at 5:00 in the lunchroom, you know, like on her phone, like takes her mask down. She's like, I think it's great, you know, I'm right here. And, you know, we really think this is a good idea. And it was just like, of course, she's, it was just perfect. And so I just, I'm, this school that's getting you, they are so lucky to get you. And I hope that, I'm glad that they recognized an amazing young woman when they saw her. But I'll tell you, you are, I just can't wait to see what you do. And I hope you'll stay in touch with all of us and, and I'm sure I took too much time. But anyway, congratulations. We have a gift from the committee for you. We found out that your bookstore at Penn takes Barnes &amp; Noble gift cards. So we, we got you something so you can get something when you get there. And flowers are also from us and just congratulations. Thank you so much.
So I am very, very, this is a very emotional evening for some, many reasons. But I am so sad to see Skylah be leaving us, not just as the committee rep, but just because of her involvement with the school and in my world. And she really is an inspiration. She is a role model for her peers, but she's really a role model for us as adults. And like Nicole said, she is a ray of sunshine. I don't know if it's because she smiles and I don't know her parents are here. Maybe she wakes up smiling, I don't know. We all have our down times, but I've never seen her down. And I have talked about this before, the very first time I ever met her was when she was maybe in second grade. She was a daisy or something and it was Chris Jones had invited me to speak on women leadership to these little teeny tiny little girls. And she just was so captivating. And I didn't even know her at that time, but that left an imprint for me. And so I just know that she's going to make huge changes in our world. I do say to everyone, she's definitely going to be President of the United States. I just hope I live long enough to be able to vote for her because she really is what we need in the world. We just have to wait till she gets a little older to get there, although I think she could handle the job now. But anyway, I just express my sincere gratitude. And on behalf of Dr. Hanskam and I, we also have something for you.
We're all going to have to get a picture.
This is a little.
That's not all brownies, is it?
There's a little bit of U Penn in there for you. And a little bit of Mashpee to take to this.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to soak up the next few weeks with her. I get to do the sleepover on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend here. And I get to go to Great Wolf Lodge on Memorial Day with the whole senior class and all of the other things that I hope that I get to just sort of be a fly on the wall and observe because I'm just going to miss you so much.
Yeah, we're going to, we'd like to get a whole picture. Since we eat up all the night time, if anybody else wants to say anything. You certainly can. Okay, we'll put Skylah in the middle. Yep. Girl, girl. A little. Wait for us. Okay. I did my voice a little close to you. That looks good. We've got Mashpee. Coach, do you want one with you and Patty and Skylah?
Yeah. I hate getting my picture taken, but any chance to hang out with my girl?
Do you want a picture with Skylah? All right, we got to get one with Elliot.
Yes.
And Mom and Dad?
Yeah, Mom and Dad.
It's your Mom and Dad.
Oh, yeah, Mom and Dad.
Obviously. She's amazing.
He thought it was all.
Small party.
Thank you so much for lending her to us all these years.
Thank you.
Look at that gorgeous hand. Thank you guys, seriously, for supporting her, doing all this, all these years. She's really made a huge difference.
Again, such a difference from coming into ETS. Little, little. I went off to college now. Like crazy. It's crazy.
Thank you.
If you want to say something. I'm going to miss your parents too, Skylah. Like your dad coming in and being like, can I drive her home? Which is a pressure. And your mom being like, when's this going to be over?
But if they get bored, they can always volunteer.
Do you need a hand to carry everything?
Yeah, the name tag, I told you.
Just sliding out.
Just sliding out, yeah. Put it on her dorm door.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. I think we should end on that. Yeah. Are you going to stick around? Okay, all right. So, so now we got to circle back to the rework. So each of the committee members got a Google form. This is this little card that you have in front of us now. So these effectively act as nominees. I think. If I, if I don't, if I remember correctly, aren't, aren't you supposed to like do this part or something? Or I, how does this work? Well. Don?
So you can do it.
I can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It's never come in the middle of the meeting before because we've always had.
Right, usually. We always learned last year that that doesn't have to happen.
Yeah.
And you can do it.
Okay. So, but we do take the chair position first.
Yes.
Because.
Because then the chair does.
All right, so we have two self nominations for chair, either myself or Don. Mr. Myers. And I think at this point, we just, we each say why we want to be chair. Right? Anyone want to say anything?
I'll go for it to you first as your.
So I see the role of the chair as being not just convening the meetings and sort of staying on top of things with Patty and kind of communicating everything out to the committee. Those are some important things. But I also think you're sort of the public face for the committee in terms of being a spokesperson for the school committee. It, it does take a lot more time than I anticipated. I wasn't sure if any woman else was going to put their name in for chair, so I just put my name in just to be sure that we had at least one nominee. But I am happy to continue on if that's the will of the committee. And if not, I will happily pass the gavel.
So. I appreciate, you know, the leadership that Nicole has provided. And she's right, it does take a significant effort by whoever is in that position because you think about all the meetings that the committee has and the subcommittees have, and then just multiply that. Because every time anything happens, the chair is talking with the superintendent and then talking with each of us. So I concur with Nicole in that regard. I do believe we've tried to get everyone involved in that role in their tenure within the school committee so that it's not like it was in the past where we would have an individual who was always in that position forever. If you look at other town committees, they make an effort to rotate that. That being said, similar to Nicole, I put my name in there just in case no one else is good. I was hoping that one of our younger members, younger in tenure.
Newer members.
Newer members. Well, they have tenure, they're at least 20 years. Would feel that they're ready to take on that role. And since we don't get to share this prior to the meeting, this is really the first time in real time that we get to see this and see what other people's interests are within this. And so I'm happy, I'm glad to see, I don't know, talk to whoever here, that we've got a couple other individuals who are interested in the vice chair roles, which is, which is good. Because I feel that that does help prepare you a little bit towards becoming the chair at some point in the near future. So I'm glad to see that. I guess that being said, yeah, I'll withdraw my name on consideration for the chair.
Wow, okay. Okay. Did not see that coming, Don. Thank you. I was going to withdraw my name, but that. Okay. So do we, do we still take a vote?
Yeah, you have to.
Okay. So the nomination is for me to stay in place as chair. And do we have to have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Don. Any further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Don? Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, wow, thank you. I vote yes. I, thank you, sorry. It's just, it's the surroundings.
This is an higher situation. It's the most awkward meeting we had.
Yes, we're like sitting on. Okay, thank you. All right, so, so then moving down to nominees for vice chair, we have Brian, Don and Kathy. So would any of you like to state your case for the committee?
I'm going to withdraw my name from that.
Okay, Don's going to withdraw?
I'd also like to withdraw my name.
Oh, see what you started?
I can still make my case if you want.
All right, so we have Kathy Lewis, I nominate, I'll, do I nominate?
I think she's nominated, I wish so.
I did nominate myself, yeah.
Okay. And then a second?
I'll second.
I'll take it from Brian, even though there was a little tie there.
It's all good.
And any further discussion? Sorry, do you want to say?
No, I just, I'm excited to step up, you know, working on my masters is why I didn't throw my name in for chair, Don, in case you were curious, but trying to finish that program and then hopefully in the future we'll see. But thank you all for, for that, so.
Great.
I also have a discussion, Madam Chair. I think that it's good practice for a lot of our boards to be consistent throughout the town. As we know, traditionally, when the board, the select board reorganizes, it's usually the outgoing ones that are up for reelection. And I do believe next year, both Nicole and Kathy are up. So I think that you guys do provide a lot of support here, whether you're running for reelection or not. We appreciate your leadership and I think that that should be, you know, kind of consistent in our thought about moving forward.
I always wondered how they did that. So that's good, that's good information. I never really thought of it.
I feel like the efficiency and effectiveness for considering that idea is just.
That only works in a year you have a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every other year, it doesn't work, so. But that's a good point.
Yeah.
They do, do try to do that, it's impossible.
Okay, thanks, Brian. I'm going to call for the vote on the motion on the chair. Kathy as vice chair. Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so then that, I assume you're going to withdraw your name as secretary?
Correct, yes, I withdraw my name.
And then that leaves one nominee for secretary or clerk, which is Mr. Whedon. Is there anything you want to say, Brian, before we?
Well, I'd like to say that Sherry takes great meeting minutes. I look forward to working with her in the committee. I have served as secretary for the tribe's enrollment committee and things in the past. I'm just looking forward to share some of that leadership and support our team moving forward.
Great, thank you, Brian. So we have a motion for Brian as secretary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. Any further discussion? All right, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, so that takes care of the, the officers. And so now we have subcommittees.
Yeah, it reminds you, you have to have two primaries and one which reaches the board.
Yeah, so we've got a slight issue with curriculum.
I'm going to try not to take personally.
Yeah, well. I'm, I'm.
Can I give a pitch to it? You almost never meet.
Yeah.
That is a, almost never.
I wanted to find out, well, I guess my question relates to, when I was looking at this, I mean, when you think about, are there things that the chair has to do? Like, in other words, negotiations, does the chair have to be on negotiations? Oh, interesting.
No, you can be on, I think, whatever.
Okay, then I'm happy to volunteer for curriculum. Does anyone want to join me?
I will.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
I mean, we are adopting a math program next year, but really.
Yeah, I know. And this, I have heard that you guys are actually having meetings. So that's, that's kind of like when Chris sucked me into policy.
But I promise you, what happened last time with the LA was we did all the work and then we had one meeting where we presented it to you and then you shared it with the meeting. So it really is very.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Okay, so.
I'll withdraw from alternate too. Don wants the alternate spot.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. So Matt, you've got to take on a couple of these.
Yeah.
Okay. So be thinking about that as we're moving through these. So Don's the alternate and myself and Brian on curriculum negotiations. It looks like we have two primaries volunteering, Don and Brian. Negotiations, it looks like we have two primaries volunteering, Don and Brian. That sounds great to me. I'm going to withdraw as an alternate, and Kathy, you can be the alternate.
Okay, unless Matt wants it.
Unless Matt wants it. Oh, he can't.
He can't.
Oh, he can't, that's right.
That's the one.
Well, actually, yes, he could next year, because we're doing A and B.
Yeah.
Oh.
I could do the A and B, then I'll jump on that, yeah.
You want to be the alternate?
Yeah, that's what the president before me actually did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're the alternate.
All right.
I'll be alt A and B.
Okay, thanks for the peanut gallery over there.
Sorry.
Well, no, that's helping it out.
Okay, policy. Let's see, sorry, it's just hard for me to see this. Primary is Don and Kathy. Is this going to hold, based on everything you guys have got? Or do you want to, do we want to look at someone else for primary?
That would be my first primary, so I'm good with that one.
All right, so, so Don and Kathy for policy. Alternate, Brian, do you want to stay on that?
I'm fine with giving that up. I'm already on the policy subcommittee, so.
Okay, I can do the alternate for policy. It's been three years. I think my PTSD is gone. Okay, superintendent eval is Kathy and Brian. Is that right? Do I have, does the chair have to do that? No, perfect. And who? Who's the alternate? We've got a wrestling match to see who wants to be the alternate for the three.
I'll drop out now.
So Matt, I think since you're not taking any primaries, I would like to put you in that.
Yeah.
Wasn't he not this year?
I thought I put him for that.
He was a primary this year.
Yeah.
You have, you have this year's for primary on that other piece of paper.
Oh, okay.
So I can stay, I can stay, yeah.
And you'll just shift to alternate?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll shift to that.
All right, so Mashpee Board of Selectmen. I'm, I should be the primary as the chair, I think. And then alternate's usually the vice-chair. Collaborative, are you staying on?
Is anyone else interested?
Yeah.
Apparently not, okay.
If you don't, I mean, if you don't want to do it, because we have to do the training, right? There's training that goes involved with that.
You have to do training to do it.
Yeah.
I'll do it one more year.
Okay, thank you. Sincom?
We have an alternate for the class.
Oh.
Yeah, who should we make the alternate there?
Do you want to be the alternate, Kathy?
I'll let the vice-chair, yeah.
Collaborative?
Okay.
Okay. So collaborative is Don, with the alternate is Kathy?
So just FYI, if you remember Nicole, so we can designate an alternate, but they're not voting.
Oh, yeah.
Attendee of the meeting only.
So if you can't make the meeting, you usually just don't go to the meeting?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
But is there a way to maybe get one of us into the training for next year? Like, can we be proactive?
You can do as much training as you want.
Yeah, I think...
Right?
But I'm just thinking to be proactive, so that it's not like, well, you're the one with the training, therefore you are the...
No, because whoever takes that on has to go through that. I don't think it ever expires, so you can...
So any of us could sign up for the training?
Yeah, I mean, right now, Don and I are the only ones who have it.
Yeah, so it might be beneficial for Brian, Matt, or myself to look into that.
Someone has an inkling, you've got plenty of time to do the training.
And we can always sub you out at any point.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to.
We just have, the committee just has to vote, replace.
Okay, Sincom, I think last year we did chair and vice-chair, just like the select board?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Planning and construction. We don't have anybody identified as a primary for that. Do you want to do that, Don? No?
No.
We've got two units to negotiate next year. Don's full up.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right, for negotiations.
I mean, they're not going to meet that much, right?
Planning and construction, though, don't...
We don't process invoices related to the field.
The field.
The work of reviewing the project of the...
Yeah, so it's pretty, we think of pretty light left. Unless we do HVAC, that's not going to get started. Will it? I mean, that's the only other potential thing on the horizon.
I'm fine with stepping up.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Alter. Yeah.
I put myself down, but that was only because I was primary this year, but if, Matt, if you want...
I'll jump on that one, yeah.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Me and Brian.
We met once, twice, we met twice.
Yeah, but if we meet once, that's fine.
Sick Bank. We have Brian or Matt.
I could take over the pride and...
I'm fine with Matt, I'm already on the sick bank, so.
That's where we are, sick bank.
Yeah.
So do you want to stay on as the primary, Brian? It's been, you, no.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take Brian.
I'm trying to switch up and get into other committees that I haven't been on, just to get more familiar with them.
Okay, so primary is Matt, and then alternate is...
If he wants to be the alternate, I don't care either way.
I can be the alternate for sick bank.
Can I ask a question on sick bank? Unit C, does it hurt?
Would the alternate be able to take it from there?
I think so, but I just didn't know.
Maybe after you did C, what is it would be an alternate?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. The Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, Kathy has been our liaison. She's self-nominated, continue, sounds good to me. Any, any other, so we have as an alternate either Don or myself?
I don't think, if it makes sense to have you do that.
Okay.
Who is it?
Me. I'll be, I'll be the alternate. Finance Working Group? Okay, so now we're on working groups. So those are all the liaison positions. Working groups are, let's see, finance, probably, last year we did chair and vice-chair for finance.
Then we need two on that one?
Yeah.
And two and an alternate?
Right. So, but Don, you had indicated, is that just, you're fine withdrawing as primary for finance?
Sure.
So Kathy and I will take that, and we'll make Brian the alternate? There's really got to be two primaries for these.
Right, there's two.
I'm also fine if Dylan wants to be the alternate.
No, I've done, I've done that group, so.
He's got a, he's got like a chair and everything, so, at meetings. Yeah. All right, so, but you know, Don, have you, have you considered being a primary for outreach?
Is that interesting to you?
You were my first year, Don, we were primaries on that one together.
This is my reference, you've been around.
Yeah.
My first year, Don and I were outreach primaries together.
So do you want to switch to an alternate for that, and have Brian and Don do it?
Sure, if that's, yeah, that works.
You guys okay with that? So here's what we'll do, we'll finish this, and then we'll have a nice summary. We'll summarize it. We'll get this sheet, we'll vote it as a slate, but then if we look at this...
You will get a new one.
Yeah, if we look at this next month, and it looks lopsided or something scary, we'll change it.
If someone's like, uh-oh.
Yeah. I know, that's what I did last time. I'm like, wait a second, I'm chair, and I'm signed up for all these goodies. Okay, efficiency and effectiveness, we just heard there's already one topic for that. So Matt, you are going to be a primary for that, and who wants to...
Brian, do you want to be primary or alternate, Brian?
No, I'm fine with you taking him as a chair, vice-chair.
Primary for you, and then Brian's the alternate.
So that one's staying the same?
Is it Matt the primary, and she's going to be the alternate?
It is staying the same, yeah. So that's staying the same from last year.
All right.
Oh, I thought that was your cousin Kathy.
Kathy, I know.
Okay, and then plan for success is Brian. You're indicated as a primary, so it's me, Don, or Kathy to be the secondary or an alternate. I'm happy to stay on that as a primary if you want, and then...
Don, if you want to stay alternate, that's fine with me, too. Just looking at, I'm seeing my name here. But if you don't, that's fine, too, either way.
Which one am I?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so Don, so myself and Brian with Don as the alternate. Okay. And then for the legislative representative, we usually do this chair, then vice-chair. Yeah, okay. All right, so you would like to read these?
I will, if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Okay. So for chair is Nicole Bartlett, vice-chair Kathy Lewis, secretary Brian Whedon, and the members at large are Matthew Davis and Don Myers. Subcommittees, the two primaries per curriculum are Nicole Bartlett and Brian Whedon, and the alternate is Don Myers. For negotiations, the two primaries are Brian Whedon and Don Myers, and the alternate is Matt Davis. For policy, two primaries are Don Myers and Kathy Lewis, with the alternate is Nicole Bartlett. And superintendent evaluation, the two primaries are Kathy Lewis and Brian Whedon, with the alternate being Matthew Davis.
Okay, pause for one second.
I had something different, her curriculum, I had Brian and Don as primary, and Matt as the alternate per curriculum. No? Okay.
Curriculum, I have Brian and me, and Don as the alternate.
Maybe that's...
All right.
Okay. Liaison positions, the primary to the Board of Selectmen is Nicole Bartlett, the alternate is Kathy Lewis. Cape Cod Collaborative Board, primary is Don Myers, the alternate is Kathy Lewis. Mashpee Finance Committee, the primary is Nicole Bartlett, and the alternate is Kathy Lewis. Mashpee Planning and Construction, the primary is Brian Whedon, and the alternate is Matthew Davis. Sick Bank, primary is Matt Davis, and the alternate is Nicole Bartlett. And the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe is Kathy Lewis as primary and Nicole Bartlett as alternate. Working groups, for finance, the two primaries are Nicole Bartlett and Kathy Lewis, with an alternate of Brian Whedon. For outreach, engagement working group, the primaries are Don Myers and Brian Whedon, and the alternate is Kathy Lewis. For school community efficiency and effectiveness, the two primaries are Matthew Davis and Kathy Lewis, with the alternate being Brian Whedon. And the Plan for Success, the two primaries are Nicole Bartlett and Brian Whedon, with the alternate Don Myers. And the legislative representative is Nicole Bartlett.
You're all freaked out by how many times your name is read. See us after the meeting. All right, do I have a motion to approve the slate?
I'll make a motion to approve as it was read.
Good.
I'll second.
I sense that you're about to say something. Is there a discussion?
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah, why?
Big deep breath.
Sorry, you can't do that.
All right, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you to the members of the audience for sitting through that.
Nice, Elia, thank you.
Nice, Elia, thank you. Sorry we didn't make that last piece more entertaining.
Take some food.
Okay, so we're now down to the report of the superintendents. I was just checking to see how... It's fine, nope.
The enrollment and personnel updates is in your packet. We have 1,484 students, that's the unofficial estimate of teeth. Do you have any questions on that sheet? We also have the staffing change, the personnel sheet. We have Daniel Felix is now a long-term substitute in music for caution for the balance of this year. And then Sandra Pacheco is an administrative in special education who resigned. So we have that position. We do have our principals here. I don't know if a principal would like to share five minutes or less highlights.
It's the only time I get to talk to Mary Kate in that, so, yes.
They are available via email.
I'd like to see that, Mike is on.
Just have a couple of things. So we did our dance-off. That's our major fundraiser for the year, and we met our goal. And so next Friday, Mr. Pran and I will be taking pies to the face. Yeah, so that's always fun. But I do want to give a shout-out to Rachel Koshia and Robert Blackburn, who've been with our PTO for, I think Rachel's five or six years, and Robert's seven. We're, they're both moving on, so they've done so much for us. We just had a PTO meeting last night, ordered four picnic tables. They're paying for the first-grade field trip. It's, they've been absolutely wonderful. So shout-out to them. And then we are on our ABC 26 days of the end of the school year. So Rebecca Davis, yesterday, yeah, yesterday was A. So she, it was animal print day, so the kids either wore animal shirts, or as Brian wore, leopard sweater. Very nice. And then she brought animals in. Okay, so there was, there were so many lovely animals, but my favorite was the little squirrel monkey. And I wanted it to touch my finger, but the lady said he hates everybody, so. He bites and slaps, so I was like, okay, then, no thank you. So, and then today was bubble day, all the kids got bubbles. We had the bubble machine outside, and tomorrow's crazy sock day. So it kind of just goes along like that. So we're not helping the children to stay calm at all, in case you see. So I had a bunch of stuff the last time, but you know what? Let's just move forward, let's just go.
Thanks.
All right, Mary Kate, next?
But I do, I do want to know, who's getting Robert's stamp? Or are you giving him a special stamp before he leaves? Okay, because that's...
He's got caution.
Because that stamp is like, that is an important thing.
And so every time he stamps it, it's one...
Oh, I sat on PTO, I am very well aware of his attachment to that stamp. That's why I had to know.
I, I just...
It would look great in the caution library.
Of course it will.
I do want to give a shout-out. A shout-out to Rebecca Davis, who happens to be Matthew Davis's wife, because she is the most creative and energetic staff member. She's perfect for actually all ages of students, but particularly the little ones. And her creativity, and always with these alphabet days, and actually everything over there, so she's really amazing.
She puts a lot of thought into it.
Thank you for her, yes.
No worries. Hi, everyone, it's great to be here tonight. And what an emotional night. I just want to take a minute and acknowledge Paul A. Funk. As a new principal, it's a little overwhelming to be given a budget and say, okay, now get this all together, you're supposed to know what you're doing. And really, it was with his help that it came together, that it made sense. And Paul could just reach out to you and really help you through that whole process. And he's a wonderful individual that I appreciate. So just have to acknowledge him. But also Skyla, oh my gosh, and Gus, what would we do without our stuffed cabbage? I just, it really is an emotional night, and I do really appreciate all that those people have done and given to our kids here at school. So the other piece I'm really excited about is opening our school up to more events and having families come. Steam Night was fabulous, was great to have the Mashpee Middle High kids come and help us as well. We had Step Up Night, and we had a house full of second graders and their families, which is, it was just so wonderful to be able to do that again and to, and to welcome these kids back and see the excitement when they get to see a locker, and they're just so excited. And it was really a wonderful event, I was really pleased with that. We have more volunteers coming into the school, which is absolutely wonderful. And we are on track for our annual career day coming up in May, not in May 27, where we're really excited to welcome families and community members into the school to share their careers with our students. So it's really, it just feels so good to be getting back to some of those annual events that we've had in the past. It's also with the warm weather, it's field trip season, and our third graders just have all visited the Mashpee One Room Schoolhouse and have gone to the Mashpee Wampanoag Indian Museum and have had just wonderful experiences there. It's been really terrific. And they come back so excited and so happy to have been out and about and, and get to see part of Mashpee. And it really is a piece of the portrait of a graduate that we see come to... And it really is a piece of the portrait of a graduate that we see come to life, where they're learning about their community and Mashpee's history. So it's really a special time. Our sixth graders are heading out tomorrow to Barnstable Court, where they're going to be experiencing the court process. We used to partner with Stop and Shop, and unfortunately, this year, we have not been able to because their policy changed, where a student goes and shoplifts an item and then they get arrested and go through the court process. But this year, we're changing it up, and they're going to be actually going to the Lost and Found at Quashnet and taking some items. And I laugh because I'm usually saying, if it fits, take it. But it is going to be interesting. But we do that partnership with Mashpee Police, which is really wonderful, as well as Barnstable Courts. And all the kids always love it. It's a favorite in sixth grade. So we're happy to be able to bring that back, even if it's a little modified version. But all of our kids are going on field trips. We're looking forward to having our chaperones there. I've been telling parents, please, please, please get those Corys. We want you on these trips and to share that experience. So other than that, things are, things are good and moving along. So thank you.
So I can, I'm happy to report, we got our first seal, and we're getting our second seal any day now. So the Woods Hole Aquarium should be open next school year.
Oh, wow.
This summer and next school year.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, that's great.
The first seal is kit, and we're awaiting our second seal.
Oh. Oh, that's wonderful.
All right.
I think you should come to Career Day to talk about it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Kate. Right. The eldest child.
Hi, everyone. So, you know, thanks for having me here tonight, especially I got to meet Paul Funk, the son, who I'd heard so much about through my time at Sandwich. He was sort of a legend and friends with the principal and athletic director there. So it was nice to finally put a face to the name. At the high school, we've been doing a lot of really kind of cool, big events. Scholarship Night, some of you were there. That was an awesome thing. I think we gave away $163,000 or some really generous amount to some really well-deserving students. We've been planning graduation, Class Day, senior events. That's been taken up probably the bulk of my time. I met with the class president today, Skylah. She read me her speech. Sounds excellent. She writes and speaks well. That should be really nice for graduation. I met with the Val and Sal. They read me their speech. I thought that was also sounded really excellent. I got to dig into some of their experiences as they've gone through the school system here and hear about the wonderful things of Project 351 and some of their favorite classes, teachers, books, what inspired them to become leaders and successful. And it was, it was, it was an eye-opening day as I got to speak with some of our most successful students on the eve of them leaving. What else? MCAS, so there was an uptick in COVID, as everyone knows. More kudos to Mashpee. I think that the staff here is, there's, there's a lot of capacity built. You know, we were short-staffed all week, and it didn't, it didn't pause anything. We continued on with MCAS. We continued on with our EP testing. You know, a big shout out to Lindsay Ket, all the people who stepped up during lunch duty. For as many people as were out and key personnel, you really wouldn't have known it. So that's a testament to good people being trained well and leadership in general. So a lot of good things happening at Mashpee. I've been very impressed. And I think you guys are actually in really good shape, so that's a good thing. All right? And that's all I got, unless you guys got questions.
My favorite thing at this time of year is driving to pick my daughter up in the back and just seeing every field full. And all these kids just excited and outdoors and families there to watch. And it just, I keep saying, before these seasons end, I just want someone to drive me through so I can take a video. This is a good idea for the social media. Just take a little video and just show people in this community what's happening up at our schools at this time of year. It's so fun.
I hear it.
Yeah. I mean, it's so fun. And that's what's kind of nice to be up here, because we're not in this like. So it is, it's energizing for sure.
Yeah. It's a good place.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We will have you for one more meeting, at least, right?
I think so. When's the next?
The eighth is the joint meeting with the tribe.
Yeah.
Are you, I think you are here that.
Okay, well, okay. Just wanted to make sure. This isn't good fun. I don't think I can handle one more.
Also in the packet, you have A.D. Traveri's report. And just as a reminder, on Friday night is the senior night for our softball players. So that's the next senior night of this week. They seem to have quite a few this week. And then you have Consuelo's report as well. I do want to give a shout out to the many, many volunteers who have been in for the last sort of, feels like about 10 days' worth, coming in to judge the senior projects. And the kids get all nerved up. And I talked to one student in the morning yesterday, and he had a tie on. He was all dressed up. He goes, oh, I'm so nervous. And I said, you're going to do fine. But it's just that, and everyone I spoke to as a volunteer afterwards was just seeing the praises of the students and the topics. And so it's really nice to really make that connection in our community. So thankful to everyone who helps with that.
Those were really, I got to do three days of them. It was like, what the projects were, I was floored by some of them.
Oh, cool.
And it was, I love it. I did it virtually last year, but being in person this year was a whole other thing. So I am grateful about that.
And thank you to Consuelo. She does a lot of help organizing our volunteers so that the teachers don't have to do that so much. In terms of graduation, just a reminder, it is June 4th, a Saturday. So as school committee members to be here by 9:30, you'll receive a special parking pass that allows you a space. The tent is, I believe, going up on the 31st. And it is scheduled to go down either in the afternoon of the 4th or Sunday, the 5th, which does allow the stadium project to get going on Monday, the 6th, barring any kind of weird weather. And it is outside. We have a larger capacity for guests because the seats are, you know, we don't have to separate the seats. So it will be a wonderful, hopefully sunny day. A day like today would have been, is my, I'm going to put my order in for that. The stadium project, we did meet with the company that's doing the work, as well as Gail Associates and the DPW, and they went through sort of this whole planned schedule. And we'll be meeting, I think it's June 1st. But then after that, it's like every Wednesday, like 10 o'clock in the morning is sort of this check-in meeting. But they, they figured it out. They know what events are here in the summer. It appears to be a well-organized and well-oiled machine. Other recognitions or acknowledgements, I want to, I do want to take a minute, I'll try to speed read. I want to acknowledge all of the people who provided scholarships to our students. So I'm going to read them. So thank you to these groups. Some of them are individuals, some of them are families and organizations. So scholarship donors or providers. Advocates for a Community College Education, Ark of Plymouth and Upper Cape Cod, the Donna Lynn Yanoff Memorial Scholarship, Jim Bacaro Memorial Scholarship, Mashpee Pops Merit Scholarship, Kiwanis Club Scholarship, the Lauren Mae Falone Memorial Scholarship, Lee Ann Horn Memorial Scholarship, Luna Local 1249, the Mashpee Environmental Coalition Scholarship, Mashpee High School Boosters Club Scholarship, Mashpee High School Girls Hoops Scholarship, Mashpee Permanent Firefighter Scholarship, Mashpee Police Department Scholarship, Mashpee Women's Club Scholarship, Mashpee Women's Club Health Services Scholarship, Mashpee Youth Soccer, the Men's Club of New Seaberry Scholarship, the MTA Educational Scholarship, that's the Mashpee Teachers Association, the Rhiannon McCush Memorial Scholarship, the Robert Tippo Memorial Scholarship, Southport Scholarships, which went to 15 students this year, totaled 32,500. Then we also have scholarships that fall under the Mashpee Scholarship Foundation Trust. So we have the Allison Rollins Scholarship, the B. Jean Thomas Environmental Education Fund, the Barbara Mae Melvin Memorial Nursing Scholarship, Cape Cod Coffee Scholarship, Cape Cod Five Charitable Foundation, the Christopher A. Perkins Memorial Scholarship, Christopher was a teacher here at Mashpee, Coach Paul Finney Memorial, the David Fitzgerald Memorial Scholarship, John L. Costa Memorial Scholarship, Josephine Campisi Art Scholarship, Louis and Louise De Mayo Scholarship, Louis S. De Palma Scholarship for Physics and Engineering, MASB Promising Future Scholarship, Mashpee Chamber of Commerce Communications Award, the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce Scholastic Award, Mashpee Dental Associate Scholarship, Mashpee Orthodontic Dr. Nick Award, the Mashpee Public Administration Governmental Studies Scholarship, the Michael Ford Memorial Scholarship, Praxidis Hyland Memorial Scholarship, Priscilla Rollins and Patricia Tecanto Retired Teacher Scholarship, the Tim Ford Memorial Scholarship, the Women's Club of New Seaberry, the Zumwalt History Award, the Mashpee Scholarship Foundation Trust Scholarship, and the Falcon III. And we said it that night at Scholarship Night as well, but the generosity of individuals and organizations in paying it forward to really help our, the students selected, get a little bit of a boost is really, I think, phenomenal. And I think we need to do as much as we can to celebrate these individuals and organizations because we're very, very grateful to them.
Agreed.
I wanted to read those.
Thank you.
And then in your packet, you do have upcoming events that sort of, I think, take you, well, not quite through to. The last day of school is June 23rd, but through graduation, anyway. Do you have any questions on anything? You also have at your place the most up-to-date COVID dashboard, dashboard, just as an FYI. And I know Skylah briefly mentioned the Life Impact Diplomas, which is a new sort of legacy activity we're adding to the senior class. And we have about 30 seniors. Dr. Hanscom and I went in all of the senior English classes to explain the project. We had a video to show them, and it's optional, but it's definitely sort of being able to communicate back to a previous, doesn't have to be a teacher, it could be a nurse, a bus driver, a paraprofessional, anyone that had an impact in your life. And so they, I think those are next week. We'll be taking the students, they get to wear their caps and gowns early, and they will go and show up as a surprise to the people selected.
We may have a video to share.
We may, yes.
And it's pretty good, though, it's on TV. It's on the DL. So when Skylah said it, I was like, oh, we're talking about that.
I guess it's just. I'll act really surprised.
Yeah.
So yes, before I move on, I do want to acknowledge that the conflicting event to tonight's, to our event, is the chamber's recognition of the Citizen of the Year and also some unsung heroes. And I do want to give a shout out to Tom Rulohi as the retiring, exiting fire chief for the town of Mashpee. He's recognized as this year's Citizen of the Year. We've had a very strong partnership with Tom for all of the 10 years that he's been here. I will say personally, I remember when they moved up from Florida and their daughter was going into third grade, and there was a lot of, lots of conversations. But they came in like May. I said, no, just send her in. She'll get to be, to get used to things, and she's been lovely. And so that relationship with the fire department has really been a positive one, thanks to, I think, Tom's leadership and the new chief as well, I think, will be positive. And then one of the unsung heroes, and there's a list, but is our own Stacy Shackle. And I really do wish I could have been there tonight to speak on her behalf, but she has really, you know, gone above and beyond, you know, 24/7 to try to keep our students and staff and families safe, giving them expert guidance. Sometimes you might be afraid to share that you have symptoms with Stacy. But anyway, she is well-intended with all of her expert knowledge. She attends meetings and makes sure she has the latest information. So she's been a person that I can just say, what do you think of this? Or sometimes it's a parent email. I'm like, how shall I answer this? So she has been invaluable to us, and I'm so grateful that she's being recognized tonight.
Yay, Stacy. We'll have her back.
Yay, Stacy. Yeah, we'll recognize. That is my section.
Thanks, Patty. So next, we have a report from the Director of Finance, Ashley.
In your packet are the FY22 updates. I don't have anything specific to share tonight. I'm working with business office to close out the year, so I'll have more information at the June meeting and July meeting. Also in your packet is just for your reference, it's the FY23 voted budget that passed a town meeting. Was it last week or the week before now, two weeks ago? Do you have any questions?
I don't have any beyond the ones that I sent you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So next, we have policy updates. I turn this over to someone from the policy, so can you? We did a first read of these last meeting.
So basically, these were recommended, mask recommended edits. As you knew at the first read, we had Sarah kind of looked at them. We met prior to, it's almost been, what, three weeks now, I think?
Might have been around May 4th.
Yeah. To go over and kind of look at what's here and what's in front of you are the edits with Sarah, like the combined, like 16, page 16 through 18 are the combined edits of mask with Sarah, with our attorney's suggested edits. And this is her policy AC. Then we also had a new, there are two new to Mashpee policies regarding nondiscrimination harassment and retaliation and sexual harassment. The sexual harassment is ACAB. So there's two new, there's one new, and then there's three with updates from mask and from the attorney. So it's policies AC, ACR, ACAB, and JIKK. So as we at the, on the subcommittee recommended the changes to the, we recommend the changes. If anybody had any questions or anything, but we looked it over and felt confident with what was presented and.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
Sure. So I will make a motion to approve policies AC, ACR, ACAB, and JIKK as presented tonight with the edits.
Okay, and who's your second to have the policy?
It was Brian for that at the time, but he was on it now.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, this was prior to our reorg, so Brian was.
Yeah, you can still second it. Anybody can, but usually it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Kathy, seconded by Brian. Do we have any discussion of these?
Stupid question. I'm going to ask you anymore. File AC, what's the difference between the second paragraph, employee termination and employee termination of employment?
Employee termination would be us doing it, the school district? And employee termination of employment would be them choosing to leave?
Well, no, because the red part was what Sarah recommended. But we kind of reworked that sentence, I believe. It wasn't how it was originally, the way that in that second paragraph, there's that part you're looking at is red. So I think that was kind of just adding in the student suspension part that wasn't previously there. It was suggested that we add the student suspension and expulsion or employee termination. So it was more just a grammatical flipping of employee termination versus termination of employment. Because it's kind of the same thing. Just made the sentence flow a little better. Is how I understood it.
Well, because the adjective student is going to suspension and expulsion. That's that. That's English, that's English teacher support, not.
And this is English major. It was really just grammatical to make it flow and not be as clunky. At least, again, that's how I understood it, which is why I felt comfortable with the way it was presented, but.
Any other question? Okay. If there's no more discussion, call for the vote. Brian?
Yes.
Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we, Patty and I discussed postponing the school committee check-in goals to the summer retreat. And we'll all, because that'll allow us to include the data from the opinion survey and the student survey that was done for the first time this year, which leads us to the discussion of that retreat. We've got to send around like a little poll to identify dates. We've got to send around like a little poll to identify dates. We usually have, it's kind of like a half-day setup. My desire to have a social component failed epically last year when nobody showed up. But it was fun for me to hang out with all of the leadership.
I was there.
Yes, you did, you did come.
It was a busy year last year.
Yes. You did get there.
I did.
So I appreciate that. So, but we can do, so I'm actively soliciting ideas if you want to state those now, or if you want to sit down and think about it and get back to me. I hear there's a new ice cream parlor in Mashpee Commons coming, but there's not enough seating inside to accommodate us. At least, that's what I read in the newspaper, so.
True, for beach chairs.
Yeah. But, yeah, no comment. So, yeah, so anyone, anyone have any ideas now? Sorry, I have to keep looking past this. Do you have any? No?
I'll think about it.
Let's think about it.
Yeah, I'll think about it.
And then we'll organize a little poll to get some potential dates, but it's kind of an all or nothing thing.
Yeah.
We got to all be there or, and then there are some posting requirements, of course. Were you, is there anything else? Were you?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if that was late. And don't forget to.
Oh, you know I'll speak.
Yeah.
You're one I should, so.
Okay. So next, we are still 30 minutes behind. Okay. So next on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation. So there was a typographical error that we corrected, so you don't have a color copy, but we have the current version of this in front of you. And so just to remind everyone, and for those who might be watching, we individually submitted, completed a Google form evaluating the superintendent by the four standards that were identified for this year. That, those are instructional leadership, student learning, I'm sorry, instructional leadership, management and operations is standard two, family and community engagement is standard three, and then standard four is cultural proficiency, no, I'm sorry, professional culture, of which culture proficiency is part. So at this point, I'm just going to plan to go by standard to provide a couple of highlights. And if, I'm going to just pause at the end of each. If you want, if you provided comments and want to read any section of what you added, then feel free to do so. So the first standard is instructional leadership. The educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. We have scored the superintendent with a proficient rating for this standard. Superintendent De Boer has a strong vision for instruction in the district. She leads by being ever-present and attentive to classroom practice and by staying informed of new evidence-based instructional practices throughout the year. She attends conferences and meets regularly with her peers across other districts. She is curious and persistent. She provides resources and supports to implement new practices district-wide. Over the last year, the superintendent has used professional development opportunities to align with districts, to align with the district's plan for success, including the development of a portrait of a graduate competencies and descriptors, and continues to maintain fidelity to the MTSS framework to improve student outcomes. Is there anything that anyone would like to add on this standard? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move on. The second standard is management and operations. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. The overall rating on this standard is at the bottom of page five. That is also proficient. Mashpee continues to navigate the COVID environment nimbly under the superintendent's leadership. The superintendent emphasized communication early on and continued to do so in this school year. She handled questions and concerns from families personally. She collaborated as often as necessary with our district health coordinator and district leadership team to ensure that all health and safety practices, protocols, and guidelines were in place and were, are being followed to ensure the safety of our students and the continuation of full in-person learning. She met frequently with the MTA president to problem-solve, worked with the DPW to ensure safety practices and cleaning product, protocols were being adhered to. On top of this all, she has overseen and assembled a team that has enabled changes to hiring and recruiting that are yielding a more diverse workforce of administrators and educators, and paved the way for funding of several major capital projects that will improve the quality of our student experience. Does anyone want to add anything on management and operations? Okay. Standard three, family and community engagement. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. On this standard, the superintendent rating is exemplary. The superintendent promotes a district-wide culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion through our continued partnership with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe and continued training for district staff on cultural responsiveness and equity. The installation and ceremonies associated with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe flag raisings at each school sent a powerful message to our community and districts across the Commonwealth that Mashpee recognizes and honors the Wampanoag people and the land on which our schools sit. The new website is also a foundational element that was accomplished early in the year and is a great improvement over the previous one. The superintendent incorporated stakeholder voices, including students, staff, and parents and guardians in the search and hiring process for the next MMHS principal. Superintendent's attentive to family concerns and always strives for responsiveness. She seems to know every student, every activity, and every issue that is happening in the district. She embraces this responsibility as an opportunity and serves as a role model for our students and staff. Anyone else on standard three? And standard four. Okay, thank you. It's hard with all the colors. Professional culture. Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Superintendent, I'm sorry, the rating for the standard is proficient. Superintendent De Boer is a champion for implementing culturally responsive practices. She works hard at not just learning for herself, but empowering her staff and students, and collaborates with community members to create a culture of tolerance and respect. Her extra-degree campaign and signage dominate our social media as an indication of her engagement throughout the district and vision for our school community. The community message board shares not just events, but messages of gratitude and support. She looks for ways to recognize and acknowledge the work of staff and students. The sharing at school committee meetings this year has been exemplary. We continue to hear how Mashpee students are held in such regard at competitions, at their workplace, and in the broader community. Her leadership is reflected in the success of our students, and our district's core values are reflected in her. Any additional comments that anyone wants to add for fourth standard? Okay. The overall rating for these combined scores is proficient. We are very pleased with the superintendent's overall performance, which resulted in a proficient rating for this school year. Overall, her leadership has put the district on solid footing as we continue to navigate education in a pandemic, make the case for significant capital investments in our operating budget, and negotiate new contracts in a challenging budget climate. We note that areas for continued growth are encoded in the district's plan for success: diversity of staff, equity for all students, improved communication, and fully-aligned learning and teaching. The superintendent has assembled a team of people, has assembled a team of people in place to help her achieve this plan for success. She has cultivated partnerships with the Mashpee community that reflect her commitment to our students. We have every confidence that Superintendent De Boer will help us achieve our collective vision, that every student, every day, is safe, respected, and engaged to achieve academic and social growth in a personalized learning environment. Thank you, Superintendent De Boer. Okay. Is there any response or discussion, anyone?
It's been a long year. Thank you for everything you've put up with and definitely making sure that like, you know, the school is running very efficiently and made it through this, like, hopefully endemic and, you know, continuing us on through the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
All right. Brian, you're good?
Yes, thank you, Patty, for serving and also being the representative on the new beautiful town seal.
It is nice to be seeing those and all the emails from the town folks that we get now.
Yeah.
Yes, so next year, they'll be on our diplomas. The diplomas have already been printed, and it's like a silver version of it. But I can't wait to have to, we've made the note to make sure that they get all the correct names.
Oh, how nice. That's a great idea. You guys good? Don, Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. So the next thing, we mentioned it earlier, is the June 8th joint meeting at the tribal government center with the tribal council. In the past, we've started that meeting, we've done it differently. Sometimes we start early and do a little kind of reception or social. We do have some new members that have not toured the government center, or I don't know if that's an appropriate time to do that, if we can accommodate that. I know that, did you tell me that the new principal is coming to that meeting? Yeah, so we will have the new principal there, so, anyway. Feel free to make suggestions. As we talked about earlier, the leadership team is meeting next week, and so they'll likely discuss a draft, like, some agenda items for that. But I think the pattern that we've followed in recent years is to sort of push a sort of regular school committee business to the other meeting in that month, so that this will just be dedicated to topics for the tribal council.
Seems appropriate.
Speaking of which, did the board still have a meeting out with that?
No.
No?
It got postponed, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Brian, where are you standing? It's like, if we look at L, he has to be right there.
Yeah. Okay, and then you have on here, you mentioned the joint conference, November 2nd through the 5th.
Just as a reminder, because I think you can start to register earlier on, and based on our sort of agenda for the year, this is when we make sure everyone thinks about it and decides if that might be something, and then we can share each registrants.
Plus, you know, I like, I'm one for promoting our district, so if there are any topics that we think we should get into the program in terms of presentation, I feel like it's coming up, June, I think. Or am I thinking of NSBA?
No, I saw, but we did get it.
It would make more sense for mask to be first.
Well, you'd be surprised.
I know.
It's right here.
I do have a question about that.
They are due April 29th.
Oh, bye.
Guess we get to be attendees this year.
Yeah.
We'll put some things for next year.
Yeah. Okay, so, anyway, that's an important one to mark your calendar for. When was Epono Board?
November 2nd.
Oh. Every time I have this conference now, I'll know it's his birthday.
Yeah, I'll have a one-year-old.
Yeah. That'd feel weird. Yeah. Okay, so I think that tidies up all the new business. Are there any other items that we were going to tackle that aren't here?
No, but I'd like to thank you for your leadership for catching this up on time.
Oh, Susan? I don't know how that happened. Okay, thank you.
Actually, you're really good.
I might have.
You're actually five minutes ahead yet.
I think Ashley really.
Good job.
So I didn't lie to my husband.
Right, now time for the bus to backtrack.
So, and there's no additional public comment?
There is none at this time.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I think we can adjourn the public meeting. I'll take a motion to adjourn and move into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and move to executive session. Are we returning to public, and then returning to public meeting at the end?
Yeah, using the.
I'm sorry.
You don't have to read them. For these reasons.
Oh, for the, for the reasons listed on the agenda, executive session for.
Is that good enough?
Does that work? Okay.
All right. So a motion by Kathy?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Is that a sticker at my efficiency?
It might have been at my, it might have been at my motion, which is mine.
All right, so let's adjourn and go into executive session. Thank you. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Brian?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well. Sorry. Now, now I get it.